City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. If anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system at the dais and return it thereafter.
Thank you. Could we please have a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Ms. Allen?
Here.
Ms. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Little?
Here.
Mr. Naidoo?
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Here.
Mr. Vartan?
President.
President Fox?
Here. Okay, and now we're moving on to the Pledge of Allegiance, and I'd like to ask Officer Medina and his family to join us or to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please read the notice regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
A closed session meeting as authorized by state statute was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised that council meetings are broadcast live on Summit YouTube channel and Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV, on Comcast 36, and Verizon 33. When invited to speak, please come to the lectern, clearly state your name and address, spell your last name, and speak into the podium microphone so that your comments can be understood by all and properly recorded. Whenever an audience or council member reads from a prepared statement, please give a copy or email a copy to the city clerk's office at R.Licatis@cityofsummit.org. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and permit all to be heard, speakers are asked to limit their comments to approximately three minutes or so in length. Unless you are using an electronic device to follow the meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're moving on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the closed session minutes of September 1st?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And moving on to reports. Madam Mayor?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone, and welcome. Tomorrow, our community will celebrate the life of the late Jesse Butler, friend, mentor, and colleague. Jesse and I served together on the Summit Board of Education, and in that capacity, I learned a great deal from him. It was his life's work to draw attention to and effectively bridge the achievement gap among minority students, and he was a tireless advocate and stalwart source of support. Let us honor his life by continuing to address his important concerns and work toward meeting his goals. I send my condolences to his family, friends, and to everyone in our community whose life he touched. He will be missed. Congratulations to Summit Police Captain Richard Proctor and to all of the 21st Annual Summit Good Scout Honorees: Jesse Butler, John Detwiler, Antonetta Levecchia, the Summit Interfaith Council, and Melanie Wilson. I am very proud of your accomplishments and thank you for your outstanding service to our community. In Union County business, eight amazing Summit small businesses have been selected as Union County Small Business Champions. Congratulations to Baduwang Art, Sarah Restaurant, the UPS Store, Batavia Cafe, Brownie Points Bakery, Summit True Value Hardware, Zappi's Deli, and Sweet Nothings. We are so thankful for how these businesses are supporting the Summit community during the COVID-19 pandemic, and now all of Union County knows it too. I am also pleased to report the tremendous success of Arts and Cars this past Sunday. Thank you to Summit Downtown, Inc. for hosting the event and for all of the volunteers who helped to make it happen. I was thrilled to see the downtown bustling on Sunday. The event was successful in bringing people from Summit and all over to support our community. Earlier today, I met with members of the Chinese Club at the Summit Free Market, I mean, Free Public Library. They donated 600 new books in Mandarin Chinese and in both English and Mandarin to the children's section of the library, raising more than $2,400 to do so. This will expand the Chinese language section and establish a valuable resource for young people wanting to learn the language or to read in Chinese. Thank you to the organizers and everyone who donated. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to the city administrator's report.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. From Sunday, October 3rd to Saturday, October 9th, 2021, the Summit Fire Department will join firefighters across the nation in celebrating Fire Prevention Week. The National Fire Prevention Association is focusing on alarm education with its topic this year, "Learn the Sounds of Fire Safety." This message is particularly relevant as fire and carbon monoxide alarms have one of the greatest impacts of keeping homes safe, and people are spending more time at home during the COVID-19 pandemic. For fire safety tips or more information on the Summit Fire Department and its fire safety programs, please visit the city website at cityofsummit.org/fire. And then just a quick update again on road improvements. There are several road construction projects underway or recently completed. The Edgar Street Improvement Project continues with repairs to sidewalks, block curbing, and storm inlets. Residents are asked to avoid parking in the nearby apartment complex and instead look to park on Kent Place Boulevard, Canoe Brook Parkway, and Bedford Road. All major work has been completed on Westminster Drive and Butler Parkway, with only a few miscellaneous items left to finish on Butler Parkway. And then lastly, the city's Division of Public Works recently paved Blackburn Place, Manor Hill Road, and Locust Drive. And that's all I have for this evening. Council President, thank you.
Thank you. And now I have one item for the council president's report. We have a remote council-on-the-road Zoom meeting that we will be holding on September 27th from 7:30 to 8:30 p.m. Mayor Radiest and three members of council will host this meeting remotely on Zoom, and members of the public will be able to participate and ask questions on issues that are important to them. And I hope you'll join us. The Zoom link is available on the city's web or will be available on the city's website. So with that, we are moving on to safety and health resolution. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President. I am very pleased to introduce the resolution to appoint police sergeant. At our September 1st meeting, we discussed our Resolution 39929 was adopted declaring a vacancy within the police department for the rank of sergeant and authorize a position to be offered to the next candidate on our list. And as a result of our closed session, I am pleased to authorize the appointment and promotion to Police Officer Christopher Medina to the rank of sergeant effective September 21st, 2021.
I enthusiastically second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Okay, comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. We'll take a vote. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, and now we have the swearing-in, Madam Mayor.
He wanted to make sure Beth could see.
Oh.
It's very nice, Jean.
So first, I'm going to read a brief biography. Sergeant Christopher Medina grew up in New Providence where he was an active member in the community. He obtained his Eagle Scout recognition before graduating Oratory Prep High School. He graduated Miami University of Ohio with a Bachelor of Science degree in Business Administration Accounting. Sergeant Medina attended the John H. Stammeler Police Academy, class number 93, as an alternate route recruit. He began his law enforcement career with the Summit Police Department in 2006 as a patrol officer. During his time in the Patrol Bureau, Sergeant Medina became certified as a field training officer where he taught newly hired officers departmental policy and procedures and how to carry themselves and to respond during daily assignments. Sergeant Medina has also served in the capacity of an officer in charge, which has afforded him the opportunity to fill in as a supervisor in the absence of a sergeant or lieutenant, while overseeing the shift and the responsibilities tied to this role. Sergeant Medina has been the recipient of multiple distinguished services awards, two lifesaving awards, and one chief's award. Sergeant Medina was assigned to the Detective Bureau for a total of seven years, serving as a detective, handling investigations of crimes, executing search warrants, issuing subpoenas, and writing affidavits. Sergeant Medina also serves in the capacity as the departmental TAC officer, working as the liaison between the Summit Police Department and the New Jersey State Police for law enforcement database systems. In addition to these assignments, Sergeant Medina has attended numerous training courses, receiving multiple certifications regarding investigations, techniques, narcotics, and crime scene processing. Sergeant Medina has also graduated from Seton Hall University School of Law with a Juris Doctor and is a practicing attorney. When not working, Sergeant Medina enjoys spending time with his wife Sarah and their two children, who are here with them tonight.
Congratulations, sir.
I want to congratulate you. He's been doing all this. All right, so. I, Christopher Medina, do solemn swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to this amendment, and to the governments established in the United States and in this state, under the authority of the Constitution. I do solemn swear that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform all the duties of a police sergeant according to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations, Sergeant Medina. We're very proud of you and glad to have you in this role. So with this, I'm going to suggest that we take a short break. So anyone who wants to leave now, feel free. We won't be offended. There's lots of interesting stuff on the agenda if you want to stick around. But it's a school night, so I get it.
Bye, guys.
Goodbye, guys. Thanks for coming.
Congrats.
I guess at this point, we can do the proclamations.
Thanks. Okay. All right, I think we're ready to restart with two mayoral proclamations. I'll turn it over to the mayor.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to vote both of them.
Yeah.
But I will.
Yes.
When I read the biography.
Yes, you did. That's true.
The legislature asks members of the squad to join me. Hello again. This is a proclamation for the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad. Whereas health and safety are paramount to a sound community, and whereas since July 28, 1962, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have provided a public service to our community in support of health and safety, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have given an untold number of hours of service to Summit residents and patrons of our businesses and medical institutions, and whereas the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad answers more than 2,000 emergency calls for help each year from Summit residents, visitors, and from surrounding communities in need of mutual aid support, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members have responded to emergencies of all types, including a major decontamination effort on September 11, 2001, and operating a temporary emergency clinic during fire, power outage, and other emergencies at Overlook Medical Center, and whereas Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members quickly prepared for and continue to respond to new challenges and increased emergency call volume brought on by the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas in addition to emergency calls, Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members regularly provide non-emergency coverage at many community events, and whereas the efforts of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad members, all of whom are volunteers, should not go unrecognized, and whereas the dedication and hard work of the Volunteer First Aid Squad members provides quality services at no cost to the patient or taxpayer, saving the City of Summit approximately $2 million a year. Now therefore, I, Nora Radiest, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim the month of September 2021 as Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad Month in the City of Summit, in recognition of the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad and the importance of all the good deeds contributed by its many volunteers for 59 years, and I ask all citizens to join me in praising these volunteers and lending the squad your financial support. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 21st day of September in the year 2021. Thank you. Thank you. And I just want to reiterate to everyone out there, the squad is a volunteer organization, and they do not get any city money. So when you get that envelope every year, please just write a check and support them, because whether we like it or not, whether we want to think about it or not, we're all going to need the squad someday. And we're so fortunate to have this organization in our community. So, thank you so much.
Thank you.
This is a proclamation for the Daughters of the American Revolution for Constitution Week, and unfortunately, Lois Hegman was not able to be here tonight. She's not well. So I'll read this regardless. Whereas September 17, 2021 marks the 234th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion, and whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of proclamation each year by the President of the United States designating September 17 through 23 as Constitution Week, now therefore, I, Nora Radiest, Mayor of the City of Summit, do hereby proclaim September 17 through 23, 2021, as Constitution Week. And I ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals, the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties, remembering that lost rights may never be regained. In witness whereof, I have hereon to set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Summit to be affixed this 21st day of September in the year 2021.
Thank you. And thank you.
I'm not sure this is delivered to.
Yes, please. Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
At this time, we're going to move on to the, to public comments. If anyone who's here for one of the presentations wants to leave, we won't be offended. Thank you for your service and good night. So now we're moving on to public comments. At this point in the meeting, the public has an opportunity to comment on any matter not on the agenda. If you would like to come forward, please limit your comments to three minutes. We'll take all the comments and then address them all at once. So come on forward, state your name and address, and give us your comments. Good evening, Mr. Spur.
Hello, Council President. Steve Spur, City One, Woodland Avenue. What I wanted to spend a little bit of time addressing this evening was hybrid meetings. But firstly, I want to thank Mayor Radiest for acknowledging Jesse Butler's passing, and I served with him on the zoning board and have fond memories of him. I wanted to address hybrid meetings. On Sunday at noon, a final memo was released of what's referred to as interim conclusions regarding hybrid meetings. And just to keep this conversation going, I wanted to pose five questions that may be able to be addressed tonight or perhaps in follow-up, again, through you, Council President. Firstly, I was hoping to have through you, Council President, the city solicitor, or member of council, help distinguish between the procedural latitude afforded to the common council as opposed to the planning board or zoning board, understanding that the zoning board and planning board are quasi-judicial bodies, so there may be some additional procedural latitude, where hybrid meetings may be a bit more acceptable for a common council meeting. Secondly, I was hoping for some clarification regarding hybrid meeting upgrades, technology upgrades, within the 2022 capital budget process. That's a fun meeting in December or so every year to get a glimpse of where the city will be making some investment, and I was curious if that was anticipated to be part of the capital budget process to 2022. Third, I was hoping for some clarification regarding other municipalities that were contacted or investigated to help understand how Chatham, Bayonne, others have adopted hybrid meetings. Fourth, I wanted to know if any of our state legislators had been contacted, Assemblywoman Bramnick, Assemblywoman Munoz, or of course, Senator Kane, to understand as we are under public health emergency, and there is quite a bit of uncertainty as to whether or not state statute will permit hybrid meetings moving forward, whether or not we've been in touch with them to advocate for action in the state legislature. And then finally, I wanted to ask for some clarity regarding public input moving forward on public meetings, on hybrid meetings, rather, to see how and where the public should direct their comments and further interest regarding this subject moving forward. Now that I think we're taking a bit of a pause, they'll likely to readdress the issue in the months to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spur.
Yep.
Okay. Are there any other comments from members of the public? Okay, so I'm going to, oh, okay, come on up and.
Good evening, Delia Hamlet, 11, Brantwood.
Hello, Ms. Hamlet.
Good evening. I cannot promise I'll be as sophisticated as Mr. Spur, but I came here tonight for two reasons. One, I couldn't miss an opportunity to applaud Sergeant Medina. He is an amazing person, and I just didn't want to miss that. But secondly, I wanted to talk about the hybrid meetings. And tonight, for me, for example, I have three children. I have 14, 12, and 7. My 14-year-old is at Berkeley Aquatics. My 12-year-old is at Cody Arena in West Orange, and my 7-year-old is at Indigo Gymnastics. So for me to come here tonight, it actually cost me $60 to retrieve my children just to be here, because I think it's important to talk to you in person, or at least have a voice. And I'm glad that I could do it, but it was certainly a sacrifice. And I applaud all of the efforts. Recently, I saw the letter that you've all made. I think it's great progress. I think we're having the 27th meeting, and I think that we're making some progress. But I wanted to learn more about the technological challenges. I think we tend to say that the system is 15 years old, but I think that the residents want more information about why that matters, because for a lot of us who are pretty technological savvy, which I don't assume to be, but I think we can all say that there's companies like Convene, and there's several other companies that can host these platforms. And I just want to learn about more of our technological challenges, because I think that I'm sure there are people like Andy Miniger who could help, or people that have a technological background. And I think that it's important to engage, because as I look in the audience tonight, I think I'm the only resident that's here from Summit, except for people that are running for council, which is not good for any of us. And I know I'm not allowed to turn around, but if I had to look back there, I gauged the audience before, but I don't want to live in a town of 22,000 people where there's only one resident. It's not working. And I applaud all your efforts for the road shows and things like that, but tonight shows that it's hard, and people want to be engaged. People don't want to email comments to Rosemary. It's not personal. And I think you're all great people, and I think we want to be involved. And this is not a political issue, because there are people on both sides of the platform. So I'd like to learn more about those challenges.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hamlet. Are there any other comments from members of public? Okay, I'm going to close the, yeah, I'm going to close the public comment here, and then you'll read the one. Okay, so we have one email.
Email from James Bennett, 38 Fairview Avenue. He emailed in to talk about undergrounding power lines. Let me conclude with three specific requests to council. To press PSCNG to take a project of putting lines underground more seriously, I ask council to consider joining and actively participating in the coalition headed by Mr. Keen G. I have Mr. G.'s contact information. Chatham and New Providence are also members. Two, I also ask council to consider joining Chatham in its design estimate. Councilmember Len Resto on the Chatham Council is a source of information. Three, please let me know the status of Aaron Schrager's project to update the tree and utility line map of Summit. Thank you sincerely, James Bennett.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So we'll start with the hybrid meetings issue. I'm going to first ask our counsel, Mr. Jacoby, to address that first question about procedural latitude, zoning board, planning board, council.
Well, I think we should all start with the premise that council meetings for many, many years, probably over 100 years, have been open to the public in person. When the pandemic first hit, they passed emergency regulations allowing for remote and/or hybrid during the penancy of the pandemic. The fundamental problem, and I've experienced it because I've been in different school boards and municipalities where they attempted to do hybrid, I can tell you technologically, it's very, very difficult to engage in hybrid meetings, where you have people remotely engaging and talking, hearing the people, and having the technology to do it appropriately. One of the fundamental issues is there's a difference between zoning, planning, and here. The gentleman indicated they are quasi-judicial. There's a hearing process and decisions are made. And so the zoning and planning board meetings are a bit different than common council meetings. My recommendation is that, given the technology that this city has, and just given my experience throughout the state, it's best that you have public meetings open to the public in a public forum. When you get to dealing with the hybrid component, when you are, if you have a meeting that's noticed as a hybrid and the technology fails, the meeting has to be concluded. You cannot continue the meeting and saying, "Well, people can come down." And I can't tell you how many meetings I've been at in the last year where the technology has failed, where YouTube Live hasn't worked, where the feeds haven't worked. It becomes much, much more difficult. It becomes much, much more difficult, and you do have business to attend to. Right now, we're in a pandemic. When the pandemic ends and as it's starting to subside, I think that more and more towns will go back to full in-person meetings. I can tell you that most boards of ed are operating full in-person meetings, because students are in school and teachers are in school. But I think that when you're dealing with the planning and zoning board meetings, they are quasi judicial nature, and I know that, that certain of them are doing it full in-person, where others are taking testimony or letting people hear it from remote. Here, my recommendation is, is that given the technology, given the importance that we meet twice a month and work has to get done, people can come to the meetings and give their public statements, they can email them in to give their public statements, and people are always able to watch the meetings. The meetings are televised in the City of Summit. So there's full transparency in that people can watch it, but if people want to participate, they need to come down to the meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Jacoby. I would also add that if you have concerns, it's also always possible to call any of the members of council, or to arrange a meeting with us, or the mayor as well. We're all available, and, you know, I believe many of us have also spoken with you, Ms. Hamlet, over the past few months. So we do make ourselves available. So, you know, you may not be able, if you're not able to attend the meeting, you may not be getting up in public and making, asking a question, but it doesn't mean we aren't hearing your concerns and considering them. So, Mr. Spur, you're, the rest of your questions, the technology upgrades, I think the, the plan is to, to try to get a sense of what proposal, what kind of cost we're going to be looking at, and putting it into the 2022 budget to have an upgrade of our technology. As far as other municipalities, I believe the clerk, Rosemary Lickertis contacted several municipalities at the beginning, I believe. I'm sorry?
I'm not sure.
I believe she, she did. We've also spoken to Milburn and Chatham, Chatham Township, Chatham Borough. And I've watched all those meetings, and I have to say that they are very difficult to follow. The sound is terrible. The Milburn meeting that I watched, the people calling in could, kept saying, I can't hear anyone, and the people in the room kept saying, I can't hear anyone, and I couldn't follow what was going on. So that's not really our goal, you know? And in Bayonne, they take reservations. If you want to be able to speak, you have to call in, you have to, you know, register in advance for a reservation. I don't think that people in this community necessarily want to be put in the position of having to say in advance what they want to talk about and when. So, you know, so we have had conversations with people in other communities, and even so, our technology is not the same as everyone else's. We have, our system runs through Hometown TV. That's how they televise it. We also have YouTube Live. A lot of these communities are not, don't have a TV station associated with them, and that, you know, that adds increasing complexity. As far as state legislatures, legislators, I have not spoken to any. I believe that probably Councilmember Allen has, but, and if she wants to add anything on that, I'm happy to.
When you're done, Council President, yeah.
And as far as public input, again, it's people who, who want to have input on public, on hybrid meetings should continue to, they can attend meetings, they can email us, they can send an email to the clerk, they can call us, they can meet with us. So we're available in a lot of ways to, to get that message. So Councilmember Allen, I'll let you.
So just as, I feel like we've talked about this at length with the group, and through you, Council President.
Yes, absolutely.
So my personal opinion, and Dave and I, David knows how clear I am on this, like, I believe in hybrid meetings. I think that when you saw what happened through the pandemic, the virtual meetings work. They engage people, right? And we want to hear voices. Like you said, we want to be able to have a whole bunch of people engaging because that our community is a better place. And so the near-term challenges are the technology. The near-term challenges are HTTV in terms of figuring all that out. I'm not a technologist, so I take the word for, you know, our technology team, we're looking at it. But I'm committed, and I think we all are committed, as we wrote in the letter, we're committed to doing this, because I think the wave of the future is going to include it to the question about legislature. New York is looking to introduce it, if they have not already. California and Pennsylvania are looking at it. The governor's office did not get back to me yet, but there's indication that some, there will be some movement on it. So I didn't get a chance to update you on that, Council President. So I think what I really am looking forward to is next week, is council on the road, because that accomplishes what we're trying to get at, right? We want to have, hear people. It's a different forum than in council, where you come and it's a little bit more closed. You can talk about Broad Street, West Street Development, pedestrian safety, JCPN, whatever you want to talk about, while we cannot do that today. But we're going to get there, and I think we're committed to whatever it takes to engage our community. So I don't know if you want to.
Thank you, Councilmember Allen. The other thing I'd like to add is if this happens, I think we do need some guidance from the legislature as far as if a hybrid system fails, how do you handle it? Because, you know, this becomes a situation where they, they might say, great, you guys can do it, but, you know, but what Mr. Jacoby has pointed out is that, you know, we are not only taking public comments, we are trying to run a business meeting to run the city, and there are bills that need to be paid and decisions that need to be made. And if we have a technology failure and we have to shut down meetings, that's a real problem, so.
The other problem too is if you, if you know, when you have like an introduction of an ordinance, you announce when you're going to have the public hearing at the next meeting. So if at the next meeting it fails, that ordinance wasn't properly done. So there's a very complicated process, and there's no legislation on it. When they passed the emergency regulations through local finance, when the pandemic hit, they did it, and if you, if you read what they said is, you should only be doing essential business remotely. Essential. Paying bills, not doing, you know, difficult or controversial issues that could be safe for when you could have an open public meeting. And so right now, unless there's legislative, legislative authority that would provide guidance on that, and there's not, it's really not who of you, because frankly, as they tell people, I think there's now 70,000 lawyers in New Jersey. Somebody will sue us if we do, if you get it wrong, and it's not worth it to jeopardize the city and the business that you're doing, because you're here, at the end of the day, these meetings are the meetings of the common council to conduct business. They're open to the public, and you have to have a period for public comment. It's not a back and forth dialogue. They're common council meetings. So, well, it's good to have the engagement of the public. You want to make sure that the common council meeting and the business that you have to deal with as the common council is not jeopardized. And right now, it's very easily jeopardized, given the lack of statutory authority, the lack of case law, and frankly, the technological difficulties that I've experienced. Just for example, I've been at board meetings where they have the more sophisticated Zoom ones, they get Zoom bombed, they have to cancel the meeting. What do you do? I mean, you can't have people, you know, screaming and yelling and cursing and pornographic videos. That happened more than I can tell you over the course of last year, and even this year. So there are a lot of difficulties that have to, you know, I think, and it would be a lot safer, frankly, if the legislature took action and provided some guidance on what happens should that occur.
Thank you. Council President. Go ahead.
I just want to add, it's not much more to add, because I think my colleagues have spoken very well, and we have written a memo to the public. But I hope folks hearing this can see, first of all, I want to thank my colleague, Lisa, who, we worked, I don't know, with Michael, with Matt, with Rosie, with Nicole, and the council president, for hours and hours and hours. I can't count how many hours we have spent discussing this. And the discussion you're hearing right now is just a small bit of the number of hours we spent going through different sets of issues. Now, I understand other communities have moved forward. We're not, we understand that, but we take a very kind of deliberative process that we did here, because we think people, at the end of the day, expect that from us. And this kind of discussion that you're hearing, and Steve was involved in one of those discussions. Steve, for those of you who don't know, who are listening to this, is the chair of the zoning board. He was there, the chair of the planning board, the planning board's attorney, and at that time, we talked about the difference between the council meetings, the board meetings that are held by, say, the recycling committee, the environmental commission, versus the adjudicatory kind of meetings that the planning board and the zoning board do, and the distinctions between that. So, you know, there, we understand, and Steve, I know, understands what those distinctions are, because they were explained there. But you're getting a small taste of what it is, and I hope people understand, at the end of the day, we have taken this issue very seriously. We're not simply saying we don't want to do it because we're digging in our heels. We're trying to figure out on multiple levels. And one of the things which Steve referred to, and Lisa did also, which, and the council president, is this issue of the state being involved and giving very clear guidelines. We're really missing the legislators' input. They can put a bill together that says, this is what happens in a meeting. Actually, the simplest thing would be if our, our legislators would simply say, listen, if you have a meeting, the technology fails. You know what? It's okay, you can proceed with the meeting. It's, the onus is on the public to be able to attend or not attend, and you can just proceed, even if you, they can't hear you and so forth. But until they do that, the onus falls on us to make sure that anybody out there can participate. That's a really hard thing for us to control. Moreover, if you think about it, right, when we open it up to hybrid, we open it up to the world. Anybody from any place in the United States or the world could look at the summit, dial in information and call in. That means anybody has to have that access, according to what the state law is as currently written. But I would ask people who are passionate about this issue, let's start with solving one of our problems. And one of our problems is from the legislative side of giving us that statutory waiver of having to deal with the fact that we will not get sued. That's our, one of our biggest hurdles, and people should help us, those people who have connections to those people in the legislature, be serious about this, help us to get it accomplished. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm not allowed to speak, unless.
Oh. That was interesting. That was my Siri. All right.
I was thinking somebody was going to Zoom bomb you through your computer while we're doing this.
Exactly. It was Siri. So anyway, thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. So I think we've covered.
Council President, can I just say one last?
Yes.
No, no, this is, but while we wait for the legislature, it does not mean we are not working on making sure that we're moving forward.
Absolutely. Absolutely true.
This is not in silos.
No. And let me state that the technology aspect of it has nothing to do with the legislature. That's on us. We need to figure out our technology. You're absolutely right, Councilwoman Allen. There's two different components, but that's why the memo, if people read through it, there's both the legal aspect as well as the technology aspect that are discussed. And mind you, when we started that memo, it was much longer. We, we tried to shorten it for folks, because we thought people are not going to want to read a treatise by us. So there you go.
So with that, we'll move on to the last item, which is Mr. Bennett's undergrounding power, and I believe that Councilmember Naidoo had something to report to the committee on that.
Yes.
The administrative committee has become the, like, the black hole that sucks everything into it.
I don't know what that's, I'm not sure that that's a good thing or a bad thing.
It's a neutral thing.
It's a neutral thing. Thanks. So I want to do this, because again, Councilwoman Allen and I have talked about this. At the administrative committee, we, we of course take the issue, and I, just first of all, let me just generally talk about, because Mr. Bennett's letter touches upon a topic that I think we really do need to speak more about, and that is resiliency. And we need to talk about the fact that there's climate change. It is real. It is happening, and it has an impact on what is going on. And the fact that our infrastructure, all types of infrastructure, are decades old and are not really designed to be sustaining the type of punishment that they are getting right now. So Mr. Bennett's letter is on one aspect of it, but we need to have, in my opinion, and this is my opinion only, for whatever it's worth, we need to have a broader discussion with the public about how we get to resiliency, and how we get to the idea of dealing with what we've done as far as development, and how we can deal with those impacts. There's flooding impacts. People were all saying about neighborhoods that were flooded and so forth. There was construction in those neighborhoods that historically were wetlands and so forth. There's things that we need to think about in long term, how we plan for those things. Those all have dollar costs associated with it. But what I want to do with Mr. Bennett's letter, because I'm not going to be able to answer all aspects of it, is, is do two things. One, I want to call up Aaron Schrager to talk a little bit about historically what the city has done vis-à-vis looking at underground wiring for, for electricity. And then I want to, Councilwoman Allen and I talked about, well, there's the, beyond the practical issues associated with, can it be done, how can it be done, so forth, there's the cost issue of it. And then Councilwoman Allen and I talked, Councilwoman Allen reached out to our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, to do some kind of rough estimate of some costs associated with, so give some people, give people an idea of what the, what the numbers associated with it. Mr. Bennett's letter that he references in his letter is a cost of $2 million per mile, and based upon what they're doing in California, and that actually ends up being the number that we did, because you're hearing numbers from anywhere, $1 million a mile to $3 million a mile. So we use two, and, and we looked at about 60 miles of, of area that would need to be wired, and look at that number, and we can, after these two guys go up and talk, I'll follow up. Aaron, do you want to come up and talk about what you guys have done in the city before?
Certainly. Thank you through you, Council President.
Of course.
Hurricane or Tropical Storm Sandy, I forgot what it was classified as, which was 2012. It was when the topic first kind of came to the forefront of the engineering division at the time. And at that time, we did look into it pretty substantially to figure out costs and logistical challenges that could be created by trying to bury the infrastructure. There wasn't any formal reports, there was a lot of back and forth memos and emails with the administrator at the time. At that time, we used 2009 numbers, which were, the cost to bury was between 80,000 and 2.3 million, and that was from the Edison Electric Institute. And that was just more, 80,000 was in the middle of, you know, fields and in a very rural setting, so. So at that time, we, we did use some of the $1 million estimate, just, just for some costs. But, but we also liked that, you know, some of the challenges too then is, if everything is buried, you do then have, your normal construction costs will be going up, because now your contractor who's just putting in curb is now fishing through all these underground utilities. So there is some cost on, on that side in addition to the cost of burying it. Also, the situation where at times, if, if the feed coming in is out, it doesn't matter if you're buried, you've, you've lost the, the feed coming in, which we don't generate our own power in the city, so we are at the mercy of JCPN and their power distributor. So those were a couple of challenges. Also was the cost then, if we do bury everything, it's not just electric, assuming we'd want all the poles to go. Now homeowners would have to then bury their individual service lines, so that could be a cost either to the city or the individual homeowner. At the time, we, we thought $10,000 to $15,000 per, per property was reasonable. So that is what we had looked at just from the, just kind of a broad view at the time. We also in 2013 did meet with JCPN to try to get rough estimates, and at the time, they were looking for, I believe, $30,000 or $40,000 just to start a study, to give some, some feedback, and it wasn't pursued further at the time. But that was the last time we met with them specifically about doing it, so.
Thank you, Aaron. Tammy, do you want to talk about the kind of back of the, nobody's going to hold you to this, right? Because this is back of the envelope, rough estimate, because we wanted to get a sense of if we were to engage JCPN to do a study, which they're willing to do, but it costs about $40,000 to $50,000 to engage, to get a report from JCPN. Well, before we start spending city money on a report, what are the consequences for, for residents if we were to go forward doing it? Do you want to give your numbers, Tammy?
Absolutely. Through you, Council President.
Absolutely.
We did take a look at this. As Councilman Naidoo pointed out, we looked at 60 miles of underground power lines being buried at the average $2 million per mile, because there's numbers out there between one and three. So that's $120 million. If we were to go out. If we were to go out for bonds on that amount, and we spread that cost over a useful life of 30 years, at an interest rate of 2%, which is an average low interest rate at this time, we would be looking at approximately $4,125,000 in debt repayment per year over those 30 years. So, when you break that down, and you take the average assessed home at $423,028, and you work that out with that rate, you come out to about $545 for the average assessed home. Any home assessed higher than that, of course, the cost would be higher, but that's the average.
And that $540-plus dollars is every year for the 30-year?
Every year for the 30 years, correct.
So, that, I mean, obviously, that doesn't answer all of Mr. Bennett's questions, but that is the type of analysis that needs to be done in thinking about this issue. That doesn't mean that all 60, 80 lines, 80 miles of line have to be done. People could say, "Well, you don't need to do all of that. Maybe the costs are a little bit less. Maybe you want to do certain areas only." Of course, the issue of doing underground lines does not address the fact that if you have distribution lines that go down or substations that go down, you're still going to lose power. It doesn't address the fact that if you have underground lines, there could be flooding issues instead of trees coming down that we just had that would disrupt the power service. So, there's trade-offs there that one has to think about. But before we spend money on getting a study from JCPN L, which is real dollars going out the door, we should understand what the consequences are, and then council and the public can decide, okay, is that a good or a bad way of spending money? But people have to understand that if people who are saying, "Hey, listen, let's go ahead and underground all the lines," which people do when trees fall and their lines go out and people are without power, and I understand that frustration. I've been there. You've been there. Everybody's been there. We all get very frustrated about it. And so, you say, "Why can't we just underground it like other places?" We're talking about some X amount of dollars, probably a few hundred dollars per year in additional taxes that you're going to have on an individual, on an average home, and probably a couple of thousand dollars on a very high-end home. That's what we're talking about. Anybody, if anybody wants to add anything, please.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you. Yeah, so just to also address the, he mentioned Len Resto and a couple of other individuals. So, I've been a part of the mayor's phone calls, just, there's neighboring towns that are talking about the same issue. So, I think this is a pressing issue, and we agree that there has to be another answer. I don't know what the answer is. I don't know if it's bearing lines. I feel like it was a great start having a conversation with Tammy. I think that if towns band together, and we can put some pressure on BPU, when I look at power lines, and I do not mean this any disrespect to JCPN L or whoever's pole it is, but when it's leaning over and I'm walking up the street and I see a leaning pole, I think to myself, is this what, what our electric is going to look like in 25 years? So, I think, you know, it's admirable that he's writing us about bearing lines. It's getting us talking. I think we're not the only one talking about it. And so, I don't know, through you, Council President, I don't know if Mayor Radus wants to weigh in at all.
I think there's a lot of information we still have to gain. And I think, and we need to start with what the numbers are. And then what you were talking about, Tammy, in terms of taxes based upon the bond. But there's also, individual homeowners have to spend extra money to lay wires in there. So, it's not just $545 a year. It's more than that.
Well, I think Aaron said that it was around $15,000, $10,000 to $15,000 per household to get then to the, to the line from the road to the, to the house.
Right. And then I think we also have to, I mean, there's a lot of research. I think the other thing is, what about when, when power lines are damaged? And now they're underground. So, what's the cost of repairing an underground line as opposed to--
Much higher.
I don't know. I'd like to know. I don't know. So, there's a lot to look at.
Right. Okay, so I think we've covered Mr. Bennett's questions. So, with that, I think we will close the public comment period, and we'll move on to our ordinance for hearing. Councilmember Little, are you, wait, I have to have Madam Clerk read the ordinance.
The clerk needs to read it, yes.
Yes, that's what I realized after I said that. I was so excited to see you up there.
Ordinance 21-3247. An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-14, Department of Community Services.
Okay, now Councilmember Little, please.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance amends the section of the code to memorialize changes that are already taking place in the organizational structure of the Department of Community Services. So, it may change some of the titles. It takes some responsibilities from positions, moves them to other missions, and just memorializes changes that are already taking place. So, it's very clear. So, I would ask that we open this hearing on this ordinance.
I second that.
Okay, are there any comments? Okay, so I'm opening the hearing, and are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, seems like there are no comments, so I'm going to close the hearing. And we will move on now to ordinances for final consideration. Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 21-3247. An ordinance amending the code, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Departments Created, Section 2-14, Department of Community Services.
Thank you. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. And we just had the hearing on this matter to memorialize changes that are already taking place in the organizational structure for the Department of Community Services. I now ask that we approve this ordinance.
Second it.
Okay, could we have a roll call, please?
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
And President Fox?
Aye. So, the motion carries. And now we're moving on to resolutions. So, our first one is a finance resolution about the audit, 2020 audit review. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is Resolution Number 8055. New Jersey state law requires that every municipality must conduct an audit on an annual basis. State law further requires that we vote to certify a review of that audit was reviewed by each member of the governing body, and that we are familiar with the comments and recommendations made as a result of the audit. This year, there were no comments nor recommendations. In municipal finance, this occurrence is both very rare and highly commendable. So, congratulations to our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and the finance team for this most recent example of how they simply do their jobs very well. So, I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
Yes, Council President.
Yes, Councilmember O'Sullivan.
So, I just wanted to say, this was an amazing audit, and it reflects how fortunate we are to have the finest professionals working on our behalf at City Hall. I want to thank our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and the whole finance team on a job well done. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. Does anyone else have anything? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. I just want to concur. I, you know what, I spoke to Greg today about what it looks like with the audit and just to understand it better, and he really complimented you today, Tammy, to say that, you know what, to come back with very, with no recommendations or one minor one is quite a feat. So, congratulations. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Allen. I think we all concur on a job well done. So, with that, are there comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in, oh, wait, roll call.
Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Finance Number 2. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9119. This resolution authorizes the issuance of bond anticipation notes in the amount of $30,732,000. This short-term funding mechanism bundles bond ordinances for capital projects going back to October of 2019 through to this year that include, but are not limited to, road improvement projects, emergency vehicle purchases, the execution of the city's purchase of Seven Cedar Street, Summit's contribution to the joint meetings, capital projects, and the new firehouse project. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Of course. Ms. Allen?
Aye.
Ms. Hairston?
Aye.
Ms. Little?
Aye.
Mr. Naidoo?
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan?
Aye.
Mr. Vartan?
Aye.
President Fox?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Moving on to Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan?
Thank you, Council President. This is ID Number 9104, to authorize the extension of a license agreement with Atlantic Health Systems Hospital Corporation, Overlook Medical Center, for the use of our community center as a temporary COVID-19 vaccination clinic. Back in February of this year, the city entered into an agreement with Atlantic Health Systems to use the Summit Community Center as a vaccination clinic through the middle of June. Before the agreement expired, both parties agreed to an extension through September 30, 2021. We are once again introducing a resolution to extend the license agreement with Atlantic Health Systems to use our community center as a vaccination clinic through March 31, 2022. Atlantic Health is starting to see an uptick of first doses and anticipates the need to administer booster shots to the non-immunocompromised population if those are approved. Right now, vaccination, vaccine appointments are available two days per week, but Atlantic Health will be monitoring volume in order to adjust as necessary so they can serve our community needs. This license agreement has been beneficial for the people of Summit and residents of surrounding towns. Since February, more than 40,000 COVID-19 vaccinations have been administered at the community center, which is just a remarkable number. I want to thank Director Ozarovsky and his team for their flexibility because they have been able to accommodate their regularly scheduled activities while Atlantic Health performs their duties. So, I ask that we approve this resolution.
I very enthusiastically second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. I have three things I would like to say about this. First, this is a good partnership, and I'll echo Councilman O'Sullivan saying thank you to the DCP staff for continuing to share space and make this successful alongside all of the other programming. Second, thanks to Atlantic Health for continuing to make this available. My understanding is that we're one of the only municipalities in the area that has done something like this. And third is what I say every time the vaccine comes up in a council meeting. I believe it's our responsibility as elected officials and as human beings to continue to urge anyone who is yet unvaccinated to please do so for yourself and for this community, to remain healthy, safe, and vibrant. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Councilmember Hairston?
Thank you, Council President.
And then Councilmember Little, you'll be next.
I just want to echo what Councilman Vartan has said in really applauding Mark Mazarski and really how challenging it was last year for this community to go through with the rest of the state, the rest of the nation, having to respond and learn. And it was an incredible collaboration that it is something we need to be proud of, that Summit was first in doing it, that Overlook, who is a regional hospital, is being able to vaccinate people even beyond. And so, I don't want it to go unnoticed that our administrator also had to work out many details to make this happen, and it's a very big deal. And unfortunately, we're not at the end of this. And so, I just enthusiastically endorse this resolution.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston. Councilmember Little?
Thank you, Council President. I feel, I want to just thank the Department of Community Programs. I've said it before, but I think all of the city divisions and directors all did an incredible job pivoting and changing their job descriptions when the COVID pandemic hit, but maybe no division more, you know, had to change everything more than Department of Community Programs. Their entire job descriptions changed. They all pivoted to completely new responsibilities, completely new jobs, and completely different responsibilities with the city during the pandemic. And one of those, the things that came out of this was the vaccine clinic at the community center. It's been an incredible partnership with Overlook Hospital, Atlantic Health, and our Department of Community Programs to provide this. And because it's been in our community, and because they've been able to do 40,000 vaccinations, we have some high vaccination rates in Summit, and we've been able to get our kids back to school. We've been able to get normality back in our lives. And it's really due in large part to the efforts of both Atlantic Health and our staff at the community programs. I want to thank them. And I want to thank them personally because my daughter was recently eligible for the third booster, and we were able personally to take advantage of it. It was seamless. It was easy. It was, everyone was friendly. It was just, it was just a really wonderful experience from the point of view of using it as a, as a vaccine center. And I, so I really want to thank everyone. This has been really special and incredible effort by everyone. Enthusiastically support the continuation.
Thank you, Councilmember Little. Councilmember Naidoo?
Thank you, Council President. I'm not going to repeat, but I echo everything that my colleagues just said in thanking the Department of Community Programs, the city administrator, Atlantic Health for working cooperatively and getting this done. And I join my colleague, Councilman Vartan, in saying that anybody that can get vaccinated should get vaccinated. This is the only way we're going to defeat this. And the fact of the matter is, my hope is, while this lease or this agreement goes on till March, we don't need it till March, that this ends before March, that we move forward and get out of this. Because sitting around with masks is not normal. Seeing people through masks and through windows is not the way humans should have to interact with each other. And the only way we're going to get there is everybody works as a community. And I think it's wonderful that we got to 40,000, but we need to get to everyone to get this done. So, please do it.
Thank you, Councilmember Naidoo. Does anyone else have anything? Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. This is a great resource. I actually just had one quick question. Are we getting grant money for it, for that space, by chance?
I believe we are not.
No.
No, no.
All right.
Okay. Are there any comments from members of the public? I echo everything that's been said. I think this is a great program. And I'm going to call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, moving, oh, there actually, there was one typo in one of the whereas's. Do we need to correct that?
It was the date.
The date, yes. It was, instead of, and whereas number two, instead of September 21st, it should say May 18th. Do we need to revote, or that's not material?
It's a scribner's error.
Okay, thank you. All right. So, moving on, we've got one resolution from Law and Labor. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Council President. Pursuant to our discussion in closed session, I'm introducing Resolution 8084 to authorize 40 days of accrued time to be paid out to a retiring employee in the police department. In accordance with the applicable collections and negotiations agreement, this employee accumulated 15 vacation days in 2021 and is entitled to an additional 25 days of terminal leave as an employee of the city. The accrued time is based on his retirement date of September 1, 2021, and I ask to move this resolution.
And I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. So, we're moving on. We have three capital projects resolutions. Councilmember Little, would you like to get started?
Thank you, Council President. The first capital projects resolution is Number 8094. It's to authorize the cooperative purchase of a screener for the transport station. And this is a piece of equipment that's in place. It is a, the piece of equipment that's currently in use, it was purchased in 1990, so we've gotten really a lot of great use from it. And it's well past its lifespan, so we are purchasing a new screener that will be used at the transport station. And the cooperative pricing is for $100,5800. It will result in a cost saving for the, there's no equipment needed in this application on the New Jersey State contract or any other local cooperative. So, we're using a national cooperative to do this. And I ask that we approve this resolution.
Oh, sorry, second. Like, who should be second?
Are there any comments from members of council? Are there any comments from members of the public? Come on up, Mr. Miniger.
Andy Miniger, 15 Edgar Street. It's a simple question. What is a screener?
Well, I can do the very simple answer, but perhaps Mr. Schreger can do the more involvement.
I believe it just screens dirt and mulch and things like that.
I believe it just screens dirt and mulch and things like that. But, Mr. Schreger, would you like to do the fancy answer?
Yes, true, Council President. That's essentially it. I mean, one thing we all have in common, we were all kids once, so the little thing you'd get with the beach bucket that you would sift through the sand. This is essentially the adult version, industrial grade. It is to sift through our compost piles, our leaves, our topsoil. You do swap the screen out, depending on how fine of a piece of material you want to go through it. It is 30 years old, it does get a lot of use. I will use this opportunity just to point out, it's 30 years old because the DPW garage staff have kept it, not on the road, but at the transfer station that long. And we did exhaust, we even use eBay at times to buy parts. There's just none out there, so. So yeah, essentially, it is just, it's a sifter, mechanical, so.
Right, and we use it to get, we create those materials that we then use on city properties and also give away to residents, correct?
Correct, compost, topsoil, yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schreger. All right, so are there any other comments on this piece of equipment? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, all those opposed? Motion carries, Capital Projects number two. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. Number two is number 8092. It's to authorize the purchase in excess of $17,500 for transfer station engineering evaluation services in the amount of $50,000. The main building at the city's transfer station is a very complex building where almost 10,000 tons of waste is processed every year. So we have the structure itself, we have several compacture packer units, we have electrical and mechanical systems, all kinds of things that go into that main building. And the building had a major overhaul since it was constructed in the 1970s. So some of the components and some of the physical structure is starting to deteriorate. In addition, codes and standards for transfer station facilities have drastically changed and may need to make some improvements to bring everything up to code. So we are asking to engage the services of a consultant who will help us figure out what needs to be done and a plan for us tackling this issue. So I ask that we approve this resolution.
Seconded.
Are there any comments from members of council? Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Council President. The only question I have is, there were mechanical issues at the transfer station. Is this part of all of that?
I'm going to call Mr. Schreger up and let him address that.
Yes, through you, Council President. The last few weeks or possibly even months, there's been some delays for mechanical issues. And the packer units we have, which both, some are visible to the public, that kind of condenses the disposal area, and then the packer, which then pushes it into our trucks, we've had issues with both of them. And a lot is, you know, this study, the RFP, was in works before we've had those issues just because we know there could be bigger projects that are needed to increase the life of the facility. It hasn't really had a study in, since it was created in the 70s. So we're trying to identify everything so we can plan appropriately, budget appropriately, and prevent any shutdowns from happening in the future, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schreger. Any other comments or questions? Any comments from the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, one last, Capital Projects, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, the last, Capital Projects Resolution, number 8066. And this is to declare vacancy in the Department of Police Services for the construction official, a longtime construction officer is retiring, Gary Booth, he's done a great job for the city. This is obviously a crucial position, you know, it does all the construction officials' inspections, and so we ask that we approve the declaration of vacancy to fill this position.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we're moving on now to safety and health. Councilmember Hairston, would you like to do the first safety and health resolution?
I absolutely would. Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution 9101, which is to award the bid for the fire headquarters project at the amount of $15,017,650,000. And this resolution is awarding this construction project to Brahma Construction Corporation, 1,360 Route 23 in Wayne, New Jersey. And this is the culmination of a long process that the city has gone through to award the contract with alternated A and B options, which are to add a radiant heat floor and a standing seam metal roof. And the, as I said, the total award is for $15,017,650,000. And, Council President, I don't know if it's appropriate to do it after it's been seconded, but I think this is such a monumental endeavor that the community has gone through. If we could allow the chief to say a little bit more about when it would be?
Let's do the second, and then during the comments, I think that is an appropriate thing.
So I ask for approval of this resolution.
Okay.
I second.
Okay. Chief, would you like to come forward and say anything, or were you not planning to? Don't want to put you on the spot.
No, no problem. Yeah, so this is a big project, we're happy to have to come to a department rewarding the contract. As far as next steps moving forward, after we approve it tonight, we'll be meeting with the contractor, talk about, we're going to have a pre-construction meeting, talk about dates, groundbreaking, and we'll continually get a shovel on the ground, so. So once we talk to them, we'll have better input on rate on a base. Hopefully, fall time, we'll have something going on, so. And we'll also be working through the parking to have that parking lot permanently closed during construction, so.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Naiden.
Thank you, Council President, through you, and since the chief is up there. You know, in talking, this is the end of one phase, but the beginning of a new phase, and this is the phase where we're going to spend a lot of money. And so what I would say is, and I understand from discussing with members of the safety committee, that at least there's going to be one member of the fire department who's going to be really running point vis a vis making sure that the costs are being looked at very carefully. And I assume also the contractor will be looking at what, when hiring subcontractors and so forth, and looking at the costs. But these are, this is an 18-month or so project, and there's always issues that can happen. And what I would ask that we do is, because it's such a large number, that, you know, there'd be regular updates through the safety committee to the rest of council about where we are in the process, and because rather than get to the very end and have a whole bunch of change orders and finding out that things have increased, that along the way, we know exactly where we stand in this project.
Yeah, we'll definitely meet with, at our regularly bi-weekly safety meetings, we'll address safety also, maybe do presentations at the start to get the product moving forward. We'll actually have some presentations through the council meetings, maybe every monthly to give you update documentation, pictures of what's going on through construction just to keep everybody abreast of the progress throughout the project.
Thank you, Chief, I appreciate it, and good luck with it.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from members of council? Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. I have three thoughts about this, too. So first, another acknowledgement of all the incredibly hard work that went into getting us here. Thank you to the members of the fire department who worked side by side with the architects, other city staff, sitting and former members of council, and the mayor, as this slowly but surely moved forward over the last several years. So second, there are two add-ons, as Councilmember Hairston mentioned. First, the radiant heat floor. The less expensive option would be overhead heating in the bay. However, by investing in the radiant floor heating now, we will save money on energy costs in the long term. The roof is a similar situation. A less expensive asphalt roof would need to be replaced in about 25 years. Spending more now on a standing seam metal roof makes a ton of sense because it'll last much longer, 50 to 75 years estimated. So third, next steps, there will be a planning meeting, and a shovel is likely to be in the ground within the next 30 to 40 days. So I'm fully confident in the dedicated members led by the chief and soon-to-be-appointed deputy chief to use their logistics and operational training to take on this move, even as they continue normal pre-planning and firefighting operations. So thank you so much for all you've done and for what you're about to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Does anyone else have anything they'd like to say? Anyone from the public like to speak?
Just want to say it's got my full support. Just could not be happier.
Come on up, Mr. Miniger.
Hi, thank you. Andy Miniger, Summit, 15 Edgar Street in Summit. So I appreciate the detail paid and the attention paid to the expenses of this, and how careful you're being with that. I have spoken with a lot of neighbors who have asked about the new fire station, and they all seem to know about two things, that it was an old building and that it costs money. And I wanted to ask if there's any way that we could get details on some of the advantages that are happening, that are kind of being lumped into the phrase "modern fire station", because I know that there are advantages over the old building than the new one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Miniger. Chief, would you like to come up and address that, please?
Anthony, I think the question was, what are the advantages with the new building versus the old?
Yes.
Yeah, so one of the big, one of the big advantages is our building, is that infrastructures and safety of the firefighters and people who enter our building. Modern-day fire stations have a hot zone within the buildings, different filtration systems, different decontamination systems within a building. Another big safety factor is circulation around the firehouse in the building and outside the building. Those are some big features with the new building. Also, training, there's a lot of training components built into this new fire station versus old one, can prevent our staff from leaving Summit more to go off-site, a lot of training will be in the building. And also our EOC. Our EOC, our current EOC is very, very old, we need to be updated. That's all we can have, our EOC component into this new building. But the biggest feature is the safety of how the building is designed, filtration, monitoring of all chemicals in the building, contamination and decontamination, everything. That's probably the biggest upgrade of the building, along with circulation with all the firemen and outside of the building.
So when you're saying EOC just for the public?
Emergency Operations Center. So beyond, other than the firefighting, we also have the Emergency Operations Center. Any kind of major event in town, all departments come together, we have a team that, you know, regulates how emergencies are managed within the city.
And that'll be centered at the new headquarters?
Exactly, one room, be a training room, be a dual-purpose room, one for firefighter training, one for the Emergency Operations Center for the city.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
So when you say, you know, safety with their, you explained to me multiple times that fires today are much more dangerous because of all the chemicals and materials.
Yeah.
So guys come back from, men and women come back from a fire, they get their suits all wiped down, washed down, whatever. And currently, they're hanging in the same room where everybody's moving around.
That's correct, yeah.
So explain then in the new building, how that will be different?
Yeah, so the new building, so obviously, fires, years ago, it was, the phrase was, "Don't breathe into bad stuff," right? You breathe smoke in, it's toxic to you. Nowadays, chemicals are injected through your skin, right? And not only that, particles are so fine, they get on your turnout gear, you go back to the station, and they off-gas. Over a certain period of time, all the chemicals off-gas into the building, like dust, and it spreads throughout the building. One of the main features in this fires is that the endroom floor, it can completely be sealed off from the rest of the building, so that eliminates all that. Also, going back to the firehouse, through the process, we would have to come in, take all the gear off, we go through the station, that decons it, firemen get new gear, and all that process is very strictly regulated, and it's actually a little way that we go around to make sure all those carcinogens are stayed in a certain area. There's there scrubbers in the building, the isolates are from dormitories, eating places, admin offices, that keep it to one part of the building, so nothing, you know, spreads throughout the building, so.
Because currently, it's just a free-for-all?
It is, yeah. Right now, in the current building, it's just debris. So the bay doors are open a lot for a reason, because it kind of, natural air pulled a lot of stuff out of the building, but by doing so, it wastes energy, it wastes heat. So this new, this new firehouse, we stayed the R as far as keeping all the energy in the building and also making sure the air is clean for the firemen. And the public comes in and, you know, visits the building.
And if I'm not mistaken, about four years ago, when we bought a big new fire truck, it had to be specially ordered because it?
Yeah, another advantage to that, yeah.
To meet all the standards, it didn't fit in the old building.
It did, yeah. Our building, the heights are very small, so the new building have a lot more height for the building, so it'll save a little money on customizing trucks and our ladder trucks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Hairston, did you have a question for the chief?
No, I just want to add on to?
Thank you, Chief.
Answer what Mr. Miniger was asking about. The public would like to hear more about it, and I think with the awarding of this contract and now having, and the one that's coming up afterwards, about the architect finishing, we will now be able to share with the public at meetings, if Council President will so approve, to share what is happening and see renditions of it. And it's an, as it is, it's an 18-month project, and the community will get an opportunity to see this amazing structure, which I want to echo what I heard our mayor saying, is that fires and disasters and things are so different now, and we are not prepared as we are today. And so we're not trying to be the best and the brightest in the entire world, but we are up to code to be able to respond with our other firefighters in other communities, because that's the way things are happening. And so, I mean, this is just a really good project, and it's done with cost savings in mind. FEMA grants, we've been able to apply for grants for this, and I know we'll be able to do it going forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Hairston, and perhaps we'll, I'll talk to you, Chief, about maybe coming and doing a presentation and letting us know where you are in the process.
Yep, we plan to be ready to start the project.
Right. Okay. Are there any other comments from members of council? All right, so with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to safety and health, number two, Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution 9106 to amend the professional services agreement in excess of $17,500. The new fire headquarters architectural design services, which include Phase IV, Phase V, and reimbursable allowance not to exceed $352,500. This resolution will be authorizing the architecture firm Lee May Erickson and Wilcox to move forward with the construction documentation and post-construction phases of the project plus reimbursable allowances. So as we, I stated in the description, there were five phases. We've finished three, and now we're going to conclude with these last two of the construction documentation and the post-construction phases. And then this third amount of $42,500 is for cost overruns. And with that, I ask for approval of this resolution.
Second.
I just would like to get a clarification here. I thought the reimbursable allowances was for things like expenses that the architects had, non-cost overruns.
It's really just dealing with, if we need extra set of prints, small admin supplies, extra prints for the project, things of that nature, the dollar amount associated with that throughout the project. We don't have to spend it all, if you don't, we can get the credit back, but through the buffer built in, you know, you can account for any kind of expenses, clerical and, you know, admin expenses, so.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure I understood that.
Yeah, yeah.
And this is actually part of the original professional services agreement?
It is, yeah. So it was actually, when we first signed the contract with LeMay, it was a million eighty-two, five, and at the time, council and authorized to go through the first three phases. This is just award, this is just saying that, yes, red phase four and five now, and now we're going to approve that, so they can do all the work that they need for the building.
Right, so just to clarify, this is not additional money? This was money we had planned?
Yeah, it was built into the original, million eighty-two, that we, back in eighteen, when we awarded the contract.
We're just releasing it now.
Yeah, this is to continue the services throughout the project.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, Chief. Okay, are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public?
I don't think he's seconded.
What?
He didn't second.
I would like to.
I'm sorry. I got distracted. Okay, come on up, Mr. Spur. Didn't mean to steal your thunder.
That's all right.
Steve Spur, 61 Woodland Avenue, connected to the firehouse. Congratulations, Chief, through you, Council President. Broad Street West redevelopment, I couldn't help but interject here. How does the timeline of Broad Street West redevelopment now impacted? We have, now that we have a sense of when a shovel could get into the ground for the firehouse, just want a sense of, you know, how the construction of the firehouse, that 18 months, the transition would occur, and then when Broad Street West, Sub District 3, could potentially begin? If that's outside the scope of this, we can take that?
I think it really is outside the scope of, you know, it's, obviously, they can't start the construction until the firehouse is moved. There is work that, you know, there is work that potentially? There is work that, you know, there is work that potentially could be done, you know, site preparation work that could be done, but it's a little speculative.
Sure, I can submit an email to maybe council.
Yeah, it's a little speculative at this point.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spur. Okay, are there any other comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Safety and health, number three. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. Introducing Resolution nine zero nine seven, which appoints new volunteer firefighters. This resolution is requesting that we approve the appointments of four candidates into the volunteer division of the Summit Fire Department. We would have Robert Villalobas to Union Hose County One, Christopher Schaumberg to Hose Company Number Two, Adam Oare to Chemical Engineer Company One, and to Nick, and the fourth, Nicholas Papa, Hook and Ladder Company One. The candidates have all met fire department requirements needed to become a volunteer firefighter, and I enthusiastically ask our board to approve, our council to approve this resolution.
Seconded.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to all our new volunteer firefighters, and thank you for volunteering. Moving on, number four. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. ID number eight zero nine seven. As a result of the closed session, we're naming fire department promotions. And I'm very, very pleased to, as a result of closed session, approve the appointments, or ask for the council to approve, the following members within the Summit Fire Department promoted to the rank of deputy chief will be Battalion Chief Paul Imbebo Jr. Promoted to the rank of Battalion Chief will be Lieutenant Ken Jenks. Promoted to the rank of lieutenant will be firefighter Mike Mamone. And hired into the career division as a probationary firefighter will be the volunteer firefighter William Zakorski. A formal swearing-in ceremony will take place on tomorrow morning at the fire headquarters at the Bell at, I think it's 9:00 AM. 9:00 AM tomorrow, and I ask for approval of this resolution.
I second that.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And moving on to safety and health, number five.
Thank you, Council President. ID eight zero eight five is to declare a vacancy in the police department pending, as a result of our closed session, our police officer, Sean O'Leary, who has served the city and the police department with distinction for over 25 years, has advised that he will be submitting his application for retirement to the state pension board with an effective date of December 1, 2021. The declaration of this vacancy will afford the police administration the ability to maintain current staffing levels within the rank of police officer. So, I request that we approve this resolution to declare a vacancy.
I second that.
Are there any comments from members of council? Comments from members of the public? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we have one last safety and health resolution from the floor concerning a vacancy for a firefighter. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President. This resolution is to request that we declare a vacancy in the fire department due to the upcoming retirement of firefighter Thomas Murray III. We, a list of eligible firefighter candidates at the probationary level will be established to ensure adequate staffing levels and to minimize overtime expenses, and we will fill this vacancy no later than October 26th, if council approves this resolution.
Seconded.
Are there any comments from members of council? Come on up, Chief.
Just want to say a little quick thing about Tom Murray. Tom Murray comes from, he's a third-generation firefighter. His grandfather was chief of department back in the 50s. His father was chief of department, and Tom Murray III is, he's great service, great family, been tremendous, good for the fire department, so we just want to congratulate him on his retirement, wish him all the success, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from members of council or members of the public? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So, at this point, we are moving on to the consent agenda. So, unless anyone has anything they'd like to discuss on this agenda, we can pull those items out. Otherwise, I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as a whole.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, moving on to council members' comments or new business. Does anyone have anything? Councilmember Vartan, do you have three things?
No, just one. Just one thing, I promise.
You're gonna throw me off my game with that.
Yeah, sorry. As the mayor proclaimed before its first aid squad month, the first aid squad changed my life. Without getting into details, I was 17 years old when a serious medical emergency took place in front of me. Along with others, I used the training I had as a very new member of the squad, and came face-to-face with suffering and ultimately death. And in losing someone I knew very well, I gained a second family. I learned very quickly I would not have to deal with that alone. The Summit First Aid Squad literally came to my side to make sure I would be okay. I decided to continue to serve and have been doing so for the last 11 years. So, some in this community can give of their time, some can give of their money, some can give of their talent, but everyone can give something to help this amazing group of heroes, my second family, continue this wonderful work. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Vartan. Very well said. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, so with that, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for coming. Stay safe.